All right, I'm going to open the meeting for Tuesday, September 27th, zoning board of appeals. If you're dialing in on the phone, please use star six to mute and unmute. So we'll start with Angela Vasurka.
Hi.
How you doing?
So I'm Rick Savant with Stenbeck &amp; Taylor. I'm just here tonight to kind of...
Right. You need to read the name.
What's that? Oh, sorry. Twenty-two sixty-nine A Angela Vasurka is seeking a special permit in accordance with three oh five thirteen point zero one of the Marshfield Municipal Code to expand an existing non-conforming structure by adding twenty feet by eighteen feet two-story addition and a crossbait twenty feet by eight feet addition on sonotubes in the rear property of Wilson Road is further identified on the assessor map and is located in the R3 zoning district. And am I supposed to? Okay.
All right, great. So we met last time and covered that addition.
Right.
We had not filed the Inland Wetland District request for the special permit, which was since done.
Okay.
And also, we were approved of the special permit that night.
Right.
We just didn't have that inland wetland district piece.
Piece.
Hadn't applied for that. But since then, the homeowners have been working with Andrew through the floodplain permit process and downsized the addition. We've stated we might be back in front of you with a smaller. So they've had to eliminate some portions to get under the substantial improvement threshold, the fifty percent. So we've submitted a revised plan. You should have it in front of you there. Basically, they've eliminated those expansion of the footprint, and they're just doing a dormer and out-the-roof addition. Do you have that, Andrew?
Yeah, sorry.
That's the original, yep.
Uh, this is the...
Yep, it's the one we had last time. And there we are. So we've eliminated that, those two rear portions, the twenty by fourteen there and the twenty by ten. And they're just dormering out the roof this time and squaring off that back left corner of the house. It's currently an ALCO there. Squaring that off. That portion has to be left open. It's just going to be a covered entry. Won't be enclosed as part of the addition, but the remainder will be just a full dormed-out roof. So that's where we're, after working with Andrew and revising the architectials, this is what they can do under the substantial improvement portion.
Okay.
Yep. And that's basically what we're here for, and is to close the loop on the inland wetland district.
So since we already approved this, do I have to...
Bob, do I have to change anything? It's been approved for a larger project.
Well, was this because of the inland wetland?
No, it was because of the floodplain.
The floodplain, yep.
And substantial improvement.
Correct, under the FEMA regulation.
Try and stay under the substantial improvement. We approved it last...
Has Andrew already determined this was not a substantial improvement?
He did with the new drawing.
So this is an amendment to the prior approval?
Yeah, I guess.
Is that what it is, Rick?
That's my belief, that that's what it would be.
As amended.
All right. So we can amend, do the amended, and then do the coastal, the inland wetland separate, that's separate than the amended.
The board always reserves the right to make those minor amendments.
Minor modifications and amendments, okay.
Take a vote, though.
So is that everything?
Uh, yes.
All right. Do we have anything from the board? Anything from the audience? Anything from the public online? All right, so I'll move that we close twenty-two sixty-nine A Angela Vasurka, sixteen Wilson Road. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Hensley, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
All right, and then I'll make a motion that we accept the amended special permit for twenty-two sixty-nine A Angela Vasurka, sixteen Wilson Road. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Hensley, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
And then on the second part of this, twenty-two sixty-nine A Angela Vasurka, I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner a request for a special permit subject to conditions alter, extend non-conforming residential structure in the inland wetland district based on finding that the applicant has demonstrated that she meets all the requirements of section thirteen point zero one point F four of the bylaw. Andrew, do we have to put up the inland wetland thing, or...
Yeah.
To agree?
Yeah.
What's that?
I...
Okay, thank you.
I can do that. It's allowed, right? It's just, you know, I, it just has to have a special permit.
Okay.
To expand or alter a structure in the inland wetland district.
All right, so we all agree with what it says up there, I assume?
I mean, you're not, this, what they're proposing is, is less intrusive than what was already...
Existing.
No, what was already approved.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just talking about the...
Basically only proposing to do half of the previously approved project.
Right, I was just looking for the inland wetland language. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I don't necessarily think there's any, it's really no different than a regular special permit. That's the language for all special permits.
Okay. All right, so we already had a second, right? We're voting to approve that. We're now on the inland wetland piece. Did you give me, I've read it in, so do we have a second to approve that?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Hensley, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now we have Joseph Maisely, twenty-two dash ninety, Joseph Maisely, the petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with three oh five dash eleven point zero nine of the Marshfield Municipal Code to create an eight hundred and sixty-five square-foot accessory apartment with the existing dwelling on the property located at eleven twenty-five Ferry Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel I fifteen dash zero six dash twenty-eight and is located in the R3 zoning district. You are?
I'm Bill Papastratos on the contract.
I know, you have to say your name for the record.
Okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm Kelly Maisely, one of the petitioners. My husband, Joe Maisely, couldn't make it tonight. But essentially, we're proposing to put on this addition to the existing single-family house, which includes an in-law apartment. The house was built by my husband's parents back in the early eighties. My husband grew up in the house. They've lived there ever since, his parents. We now have two small kids and would like to take over the house from them, but keep them living in the in-law apartment. And so we'll be sort of, you know, set up for multi-generational housing, because the existing, the existing footprint is a little small for everybody.
Okay.
Andrew, do you have anything other than the comments you gave us?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I don't know if you heard back from the board at all.
Nancy did, yeah.
Yeah, I did save it to the, to the file. They just said that eleven twenty-five has its own septic system. It's been approved for the increased flow from the apartment. And the plan's adequate for the proposed permit.
There we go.
There we go. All right, so that's it. Anything from the board?
No, I'm good.
Any questions from the audience?
Okay, Nancy, was this recent, or was that back...
That was, it was from Wednesday.
Did you hear back from Gary today, or no?
No, I heard back from Bill on Wednesday.
Because I, I, one of the, one of the discussions with Gary yesterday was the existing, they weren't aware that there was a full bath in the existing office downstairs. And Gary said that that kind of changed their view of the septic system. And so I only got the information that this was a full bath a little bit earlier and sent it over to him for that information. So I didn't know if he'd gotten back to you with that new information yet or not.
No, he hasn't.
So Andrew, wouldn't that be based on the bedrooms, not the bathrooms?
Yeah, and the discussion is, so by Board of Health standards, even if you're calling this an office, it's got an existing full bath and a closet, and it's got a door, and it's a private room that meets the definition of a bedroom under Title V. So you, you know, Title V considers that one bedroom, and then you've got another bedroom here that's two. Sorry. So I'm sorry, this one bedroom, a second bedroom here, oh, just fits again. And then you have a third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. So that's the thing Gary was concerned about, was the existing bathroom on the first floor in that existing office. And so he wanted to look into that and was going to get back to us, but I was gone, I wasn't in town hall today, so I never heard back and didn't know if he followed up with Nancy, so.
He did not.
So what size septic system is designed there?
Five.
Five bedroom.
And so he's saying there's a six, he thinks there's a six-bedroom?
He thinks that there might be an issue, and we might have to do a sort of, either a modification to a bathroom or something within the house, you know, to make it work.
If they remove that closet in the office, wouldn't that make it not a bedroom anymore?
The closet really isn't the issue. Gary said that the issue is more shower or bath in that, in that bedroom, in that bathroom.
What defines a bedroom?
All the criteria.
Privacy, basically, a private room.
I thought it had, I thought the closet was part of the definition.
If you had to walk, if you had to walk through that room to get to another room, then it would not be considered a bedroom.
What if they remove that?
Because it's a private room, that's, that's kind of the definition.
Could they remove the office part?
This is all, this is why I was trying to get Gary to weigh in on it, because it's really his, you know, that's all his loss, really.
Well, what do we have? What's the definition of a bedroom for us? I thought it had to have a closet in it to be considered a bedroom.
There's no definition of a bedroom in this bylaw. It's not something that zoning concerns themselves with, right, generally, unless you're doing an accessory apartment situation. But my own concern was that they just, you know, you guys could approve this, like, but it should be, you know, they should be cautioned and, you know, encouraged to reach out to Gary and the Board of Health and make sure that they're still, you know, that the current design for the septic system will work, even with this, you know, aspect.
What do you...
So Brian, as I understand, we can approve the accessory structure, and then they can decide where they want to put the toilets, and the Board of Health can sign off on the septic system. But we're not doing the Board of Health's job.
Right.
So we can just keep our focus to the application in front of us.
Yeah, it's going to be the layout of the bedroom. What are your intentions? You need a six-bedroom?
No, we've never treated it as a bedroom and don't intend to, so.
It's always been an office.
So there are ways of just reconfiguring the interior of the property.
Yeah, we could either remove the door or remove the tub.
The shower, right? We don't need the shower in there necessarily, so we, and we're happy to follow up with the Board of Health just to confirm their understanding. And if they, you know, think that modifications are required, we'll follow through with them. But we are trying to close on a construction loan, so it would be helpful to have this board's approval.
Yeah. Another seventy-five points.
They'll need a C of O, so they'll have to figure it all out.
Yeah.
It's none of our business.
I'm all set with this. Is there any other questions from anyone else? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we close twenty-two ninety, Joseph Maisely, eleven twenty-five Ferry Street. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Hensley, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
And I'm going to move that the board grant the petitioner's request for a special permit to add an accessory apartment, subject to the conditions to alter and extend a non-conforming residential structure based on a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that she meets, he meets all the requirements of section eleven point zero nine of the bylaws. And the only condition I would put in is that they address the bathroom in the office with the Board of Health. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Grover Hensley, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. So we have twenty-two ninety-one, Robert Lally. The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with three oh five dash ten twelve and three oh five dash thirteen point zero two of the Marshfield Municipal Code to construct an eight-by-twenty-eight deck extension onto the existing rear deck and a new eight-foot by twenty-foot kayak platform or the four-foot by twenty-foot swim platform extending into the tidal creek in a variance in accordance with three oh five ten point eleven for relief from three oh five six zero one. Look at really of dimensional and density regulations on the property located at one fifty-five Bay Avenue, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being parcel M zero five dash zero five dash forty-one, is located in the R3 zoning district.
Hello again, Rick Savant with Stenbeck &amp; Taylor. As you stated, Mr. Chair, this project does request for a special permit and a variance. The special permit is pertaining to the proposed deck extension off the rear of the house. The existing house is non-conforming, actually approaching slightly into the street, but it's a non-conforming structure. We stepped back the proposed deck eight feet off, eight point four feet off the line. And that's one portion, but it has an associated stairway going down towards the creek there also. And the special permit is involved with the, this new kayak and swim platform shown there that they're proposing. That pro, the deck, excuse me, the swim platform and the kayak have already been through conservation. We did a lot of work with the Conservation Commission to get that position and where it enters the creek and protect the marsh as best as possible and so forth. So, and of course, the variance is involved with that. We had to extend the swim platform out beyond the property line, which is mean high water or the edge of the creek in this case. So they had, they went out fifteen point nine feet to get to a little bit of depth. This swim platform is just that. It's going to be for kayaks and, and swimming. There's no dock or float or anything. This is a little tidal creek off of the Cut River there in Green Harbor. There's really no boating or anything there other than kayaks or things of that nature. So that's all been approved, and we're seeking those permits for both of these projects and with them we're best answering any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Not by me.
Why do you need a variance?
Because the kayak, we don't meet the setback requirements from the property line. We actually are extending over the property line with the swim platform.
Well, we don't have jurisdiction off your property.
We have to give, what is, why do we give variance as well for docks?
It's a permanent structure approaching the law.
You can't have a structure that close to the law line, so anytime you're that close, even with a structure like that, they give a variance.
The dock is a structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're one of the special towns that does that.
I think pavement is a structure in Marshfield.
Okay, 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 I...
We're very special.
I apologize for my ignorance.
It's not ignorance. So do we...
I didn't see the property line on the rear. That was one of the points that I...
So it's, it's property line by the creek. It's, oh yeah, Andrew's got his car surrounded there. It's that heavy blue line. It's bounded by the creek. So, and then, of course, the creek then in turn becomes the face of that retaining wall that's there and all that. So it is, it is that property line.
I couldn't see that on, on my version.
Sure, sure.
It's easier to see colored.
That blue dotted line is the property line? Or is that the mean high water line?
It's both, but it's the property line going around that peninsula there, comes back to, meets the existing block retaining wall. So they're bounded by the creek. So the creek typically is the mean high water line of the creek. They don't, it's not a center line thing or anything. It's the edge of the creek. It's how the deed describes it. So yes, and it is coincident with mean high water.
So this is, we have the coastal wetlands we have to deal with first on this, and then the variance, obviously. Do we have a...
Yep, by Canal Creek, by the canal leading to Duxbury Bay, yep. Yes, thank you, Brian, for actually mentioning that. Obviously, anything beyond the mean high waters, coastal, coastal wetlands, which we did request for, I neglected to mention it.
So do you have any questions, Andrew?
I did, uh...
All right. Bob, you were all set?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any questions from the other board members? Anything from the audience? Anything from the audience online?
Yes, my name is John Delio. I am, my wife is the owners of one-six-one Bay Ave, and we have some serious concerns about this proposed site plan.
Go ahead.
I would like to first ask if the board, we have sent a number of documents to Nancy, and if the board has had an opportunity to review our, these documents.
They're in the file.
Yeah, they're in our file, yes.
Have you had a chance to review and read these documents?
I've, I've read what you wrote.
Then if you look to the bottom of that page, you'll see that our property line is not where it says it is on the, on the site plan.
Okay, do you have a, an engineer's plan on your behalf?
Yes, and I submitted that as well from Stenbeck &amp; Taylor. You will see there that our property line extends well into the marsh, well beyond that dotted line that you previously just said that you assumed that that's the property line. It is not the property line.
I didn't assume that it was. It's, we're bounded by the creek. Our property.
I'm talking about my property line.
Okay.
So you...
What is your concern with your property line in relation to the dock?
You're saying that the pink line that we're looking at... Andrew, can you go back to his site plan? No. You're saying that pink line is your property line.
Correct. And I have also superimposed a site plan in that, in that image that you're looking at. If you zoom in, you can actually see there where the dock is proposed, where the kayak platform is proposed, and you'll actually see the, in a Google Earth or a twenty-twenty-two image, a high-definition image of the, of the, of the marsh. You zoom into that.
Right, but you're saying that they're putting the dock on your property?
Absolutely not. I'm just saying that our property line extends well beyond what is implied in this graph.
How is that reflected to this project?
That's reflected to this project because of access to swimming and boating in front of our property. In my arguments here, I mentioned that there's a conflict of user, there's a user conflict in terms of interest. We have a summer rental in this property. Our summer rental in this property is looking for peace and quiet tranquility on the marsh. And the two things, one is having the dock close enough so that swimmers and baters are swimming into our property as well as the boating traffic in front of our property, which is not pass-through boating, but active boating in front of our property. It's just kind of a conflict of interest here. In addition to that, we're looking at the extent of the dock in terms of view shed obstruction from where our patio is. You'll see where they, the engineers have put our patio, and there is, in the height of the dock with a, with the handrail on top of the dock, the swim dock is, we would like to record that as a view shed obstruction.
So is that paved patio in the dock, is that yours?
Yes.
Right there, that's yours.
Yes.
And you don't want them to have the one right next to it?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Is that all you have?
No, it isn't. If you look at my arguments here that I have submitted, and I will read them. I submitted this letter to be right before the chancellor. It's going to take a bit here. Do I have permission to read my, my, my letter of concern?
If you want to give us the highlights, you can.
Could you show me the stamp on, on that?
Yeah, your plan?
Plan right there, please?
You said it's stamped from Stenbeck &amp; Taylor.
There is an old Stenbeck &amp; Taylor plan of their property.
No, he overlaid it onto Google Earth images. It's, it's...
So that's a Google Earth plan you got right there?
Yeah, it's not an actual stamped site plan.
All right, I'm all set with that.
I, I, however, I did submit, as part of the documents that I submitted to Nancy, is a stamped Stenbeck &amp; Taylor survey. That is part of the documents that I submitted.
Brian, I've reviewed all the information that this gentleman submitted, and everything that he's looking to do is to control the activity, what takes place after this construction. So he wants to prevent people from boating, from swimming, from making noise. He is complaining that his view is going to be impacted. None of this is germane to what's in front of us.
What we're doing. That's, that's why I was asking for the short version.
Right, and, and I do not say that. I also submit my address to the, to the select board. We are not curmudgeons of the, of having fun on the, on the marsh. Another primary concern that we have is the impact of the seagrass, and that is critical. And the key, key here is that you have a dock, a kayak platform to house, it's eight by twenty, to house, I'm saying, anywhere between six to ten small craft, which do not have access, direct access into the water. They're going to be walking across the seagrass. The seagrass is critical to the protection of all the barrier walls that you see along that stretch that you have in front of you. If you destroy the seagrass, which again, I put in writing here in this document, walls begin to crumble. And I also mentioned that we saw this through our own... As part of the documents that I submitted to Nancy is a stamped Steinbeck and Taylor survey.
I seen that.
That is part of the documents that I submitted.
Brian, I've reviewed all the information that this gentleman submitted. And everything that he's looking to do is to control the activity, what takes place after this construction. So he wants to prevent people from boating, from swimming, from making noise. He is complaining that his view is going to be impacted. None of this is germane to what's in front of us.
What we're doing. That's, that's why I was asking for the short version.
Right, and, and I do not say that. I also submit my address to the, to the select board. We are not curmudgeons of the, of having fun on the, on the marsh. Another primary concern that we have is the impact of the seagrass. And that is critical. And the key, key here is that you have a dock, a kayak platform to house, it's eight by 20, to house, I'm saying anywhere between six to 10 small craft, which do not have access, direct access into the water. They're going to be walking across the seagrass. The seagrass is critical to the protection of all the barrier walls that you see along that stretch that you have in front of you. If you destroy the seagrass, which again, I put in writing here in this document, walls begin to crumble. And I also mentioned that we saw this through our own, in the upper right-hand corner of our, our property line. We would enter kayaks there. And in a short period of time, those kayaks, the entry back and forth of those kayaks began to destroy the seagrass. You destroy the first layer of seagrass and everything else becomes fallen, or in terms of the engineer's terms on like 1555, sunken marsh.
What steps have you taken, what steps have you taken to restore the seagrass?
I'm trying to prevent the destruction of the seagrass.
What steps have you taken to restore the seagrass that you said you destroyed?
We have abandoned using the kayaks on our property. We've limited our activity of the use of kayaks on our property. And again, I am not a curmudgeon here. I say in my arguments here, they're written and presented to you, that we support outdoor recreation. We support swimming. What's this in, 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 in small craft use of the marsh? We do not want to take that away from anybody. However, a dock in not addressing the proper or a, a, a non-environmentally impact or a sustainable way of getting small craft in and out of the marsh without destroying the seagrass has not been addressed in this proposal. I further say that, I ask that we delay this so that the owners of 155 Bay Ave and 161 Bay Ave can look for alternatives to entering small craft in bathing into the marsh that are not so environmentally unfriendly. And there are systems that are out there that will allow docks to be put in, that flow or go up and down with the tide and pulled out during the winter. No view shed interruption during the winter months. The tide and the grass can have a chance to re, to grow back again. And the, the tidal barrier walls are fairly protected. If you will look, I will even go on to say, if you look at 155 Bay Ave barrier wall, you'll actually see that it is beginning to crumble. Bricks are falling out of it and it's actually beginning to lean over.
Do you have anything further?
No.
Thank you.
I submitted everything I have to say.
I understand. It's part of the record. Do we have anything else? Seeing that we don't, I'm going to move that we close 2291 Robert Lally. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Do you guys want to discuss this and vote on this now or?
No, I'm good.
You ready to vote?
I am.
Everyone okay with it?
Sure.
Okay. So everyone good with the information we've heard? Or does anyone see any changes we need to make to this?
Um, my only, my only-
Meeting's closed, the, it's closed now.
My only thing would be that I, I don't know that we can permit a structure that goes off the, goes over property that the applicant doesn't own?
If I could, so you're right. And we are, we will be pursuing a chapter 91 license through Mass Waterways for, for that. So this is just the last step in the process. I should have mentioned that earlier.
That's all right. You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, so we have to deal with the Coastal Wetlands District first. And I'd move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit subject to conditions to construct and maintain a proposed kayak platform and swim platform and new house deck if applicable, as shown on the site plan dated, Rick, what's your site plan dated?
It is dated 4/18, 4/18/22.
Yep, okay. The meeting is closed. The meeting is closed. You're not allowed to speak now.
This-
Can you mute him? Uh, 22 on the coastal wet, what was it again, that address? I mean, the date?
Uh, the date is 4/18/22.
4/18/22. In the coastal, uh, in the Coastal Wetland District based on finding that the applicant has demonstrated that he meets all requirements of section 13.02.C, one of the bylaws. Um, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
And now, part two for the variance for Robert Lally. I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's application for a variance from dimensional bylaw requirements subject to the conditions based on a finding that the applicant demonstrated he meets all requirements for section 10.11 of the bylaw. And- Andrew, can you put up the, oh, they're already up there? Does everyone agree with the variance standards?
I do.
I do?
I do.
All right, so do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
Oh, sorry, I do.
Bob, do you see any conditions, we have to put our dock conditions in on this?
Subject to conservation, subject to chapter 91 water's, waterway license.
All right, so chapter, um, subject to-
You're in there in someone else.
Waterway license?
I have the conditions in there.
We have the big dock list.
Some of them did a dock earlier.
Yeah.
Probably one of Asbeld plant.
Dock conditions? Yeah, so we can, Andrew, do you have our dock conditions in there or?
I'll find them. Sorry, I'm trapped by the bus reason one.
Yeah, thank you.
Nancy, what's a, what's a dock that we've done recently? The address, I'll bring up, I'll just bring up that variance, special permit.
Was it the, um, another Little's Lane address? Or it might be under, does miscellaneous at the bottom of the folders? It may also be in there. Give me two seconds, I can go find it. Do you want to go find it, Brian?
Um, you want to look it up on your computer?
Well, I just want, I just need the address of the dock that we've done recently.
Which one on, which one on Bay Ave? We've done a few on Bay Ave.
I think we did one on Bay Ave and I know we've done one on, um-
Marginal Street.
Island, is it?
Yeah, Marginal.
Island Street.
Eskey and Marginal.
Yep, Marginal.
Marginal, we've done one?
Not this year.
Your dock on Berry Street.
I don't think we approved it, they've been continued. Oh, there we go. Right there, those are the conditions right there, Andrew.
Yep.
So we'll add these conditions to this decision. This will be part of the conditions. Do I have to read all those, Bob? Or can I attach that?
Just attach it.
Okay, so I'm going to attach, can you go to the top of it, Andrew? One through, is it 13 or 14?
15, I think.
15.
One through 15 will be part of the conditions for this, the Lally decision. And chapter 91 license. Do I have to say, um, an Asbeld? And I think that's it. So do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. 2292 Six Birch Realty Trust.
Uh, do you have to do the special permit too or?
Oh, I thought I did that first. I did the, I did that one first, the Coastal Wetlands. I did that first. All right. 2292 Six Birch Realty Trust. The petitioner is seeking a special accord, um, permit in accordance with 305-1012 and 305-13-02 of the Marshfield Municipal Code to extend an existing dock and float into the deeper water in the North River and construct a four-foot wide by 63-foot wide, 63-foot long wood pier and relocate an existing gangway and float onto the end of the new pier on the property located at Little's Lane, which is further identified on assessor's maps as being on parcel D20-01-40 and is located in the R1 zoning district.
That's right. All right, so I'm Rick Savant with Steinbeck and Taylor again. This is David Armstrong, the applicant. So this project is currently an existing dock that's there. Previously permitted dock through the zoning board and, and North River Commission and chapter, has an existing chapter 91 waterways license. You can see on the plan there, the existing float location is, so there's a nice walkway coming down and then we have a gangway that leads to where the existing float is dashed out there. So that currently on low water conditions is sitting on the mud flat. It's not accessible from the river at all. It's only useful during high tide cycle. So what's being proposed is to relocate that existing float, same float and the same gangway that's there now, move it out to the minimum required depth of water required by the Conservation Commission, which we have shown there, and relocate those two existing structures out further out into the channel. And of course, that would require constructing a 63-foot long additional pile structure to reach that. We, again, with this one, we worked very closely with the Harbor Master, Conservation Commission, multiple site visits and so forth, uh, to get to this arrangement that we have here. It's all been approved through the commission, North River Commission, and sign up from the Harbor Master also. It's another one that we'll be pursuing. We, we do have an existing chapter 91's license, but we will have to amend it to reflect this. So similar type situation as the last one where we're seeking a special permit to extend this existing here. That's really what we're hoping to do. We didn't, we didn't need a variance in this case because it was filed the last time. We're already out into, in the channel with this one. So I did talk with Andrew and Nancy about that. And, um, believe one was granted for the previous dock. And now we're just going further out into the channel just to get to that required depth.
And so was there anything from the Conservation Commission on this?
Uh, we met, we worked with them. We were all approved through them.
Okay.
Um, we had to get the dock out to that position. We, we have to have a minimum of 30 inches of water below the float. Uh, those are the depths that are shown there on the front. Uh, 32 and 36 inches on the inland side and, you know, 15 and 48 on the backside. So that's as, as, you know, as far as, you know, it could go. Well, we, the minimum distance it could go to get to that minimum required depth. So yes, they didn't, they were, they were all approved and we had multiple two-site visits there with the commission and the Harbor Master to, to arrive at that. So they're all, we have the order of conditions for, from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. And what about the chapter 91 waterways license from the Mass DEP?
We'll have to, once we, we're done with you folks, we are going to have to amend our existing license. Yes, we have an existing license that we have to amend.
All right. Anything else from Andrew?
Uh, no, I went down there to the site visit, met with Rick and Dave Armstrong and went over everything. My recommendation was they should replace some of the guard posts and guardrails and fix some of the rotting deck boards. And they were on board with all of that and planning to do, to make those improvements.
Okay.
Much of it's done.
Anything else from the board?
This appears pretty straightforward to me.
Brian? Bob, you got anything else? No?
I just, what, I just was curious, why was the original dock built to the location that it was and what changed? I was just curious.
I don't, I don't really know the answer to that question.
Because it was, it must have always been sitting in the mud at low tide.
Uh, yeah.
Just the way it always was?
Just, that's what was proposed to me and I don't think I knew enough to, um-
You didn't like to boat at low tide?
I, I didn't want to, uh, I don't know.
That's good enough.
That's a good answer.
That was what was designed previously. That was the previous design. I didn't know that it could be modified, so now I know.
All right, so, um, I move that we close, oh, they asked, anything from the audience? Audience online? Nothing? All right, I move that we close 2292 Six Birch Realty Trust. Little's Lane, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
So we'll start with the Coastal Wetlands District first. I move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit subject to the conditions to construct an extension of an existing deck and pier with a proposed float as shown on site plan dated, Rick?
Site plan is dated-
6/7/22.
6/7, 6/7/2022.
6/28.
And revised 6/28.
Oh, sorry, and revised 6/28. So 6/28/2022. In the Coastal Wetland District. Do I have a, uh, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
All right, so, and, so we don't need the variance on this. So now, um, I'll move, what, what's that, Andrew? Yeah, I'll move, oh, okay, I'll move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit subject to the conditions to permit an alteration, extension of a non-conforming use and allowing the construction of an extension to an existing dock and pier with the proposed float as shown on site plan dated 6/28/2022. In the Coastal Wetlands District based on a finding that the applicant has demonstrated that he meets all the requirements in the section 13.02.C, one of the by, of our bylaw. And so the conditions would be, Andrew, can you put those conditions so we can add those in?
Are you making me do that again?
Those conditions, one through 15?
One through, one through 15, we're good. One to 15 on our dock conditions. And the amended chapter nine, the conditions of that, the amended chapter 91 license from Mass DEP. And do you need to adjust anything with conservation or did you already?
I am completely finished with conservation.
That's what everyone thinks.
And then Asbeld, when the job's complete. Um, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Provenzi, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right, gentlemen, take care.
All right, we have Mark Cam Precision LLC. They withdrew? Oh, yeah. Right underneath it says withdrawn. Wayne DeRosa, 2294. Okay, Wayne DeRosa, twenty-two ninety-four. The petitioner is seeking a special permit in accordance with three oh five dash ten point twelve of the Marshall Municipal Code to raise an existing dwelling and construct a new twenty-two foot by forty-nine foot two-story dwelling with a seventeen foot by eighteen foot six, single-story great room on the property located at sixty West Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel M zero six dash zero three dash twelve, is located in the R three zoning district. Name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ethan Flinkstrom. I'm, uh, business partners with Wayne DeRosa. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it here today, so I'm here on his behalf and his wife Janet.
I'm Janet DeRosa.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure, I think you folks have seen a little bit of this project, but I'll just give a general overview. Sixty West Avenue, there's currently a twelve-hundred square foot dwelling that is currently non-conforming with regards to setbacks. So the plan here is to, uh, remove this existing building and, uh, build a new, a new house that will be conforming on all sides, front side and rear of the setbacks. Special permit here is within, with regards to the ten thousand square foot minimum lot requirement of which we are two hundred and eighty square foot shy. Um, and then just, just a little bit of history on this. The DeRosas has spent probably a year and a half of time and money litigating this title in order to add an additional twelve-hundred square feet to the, um, existing property. This has all been recorded in the land evidence record. So essentially, long and short of it is we've, we're creating a non-conforming building to a conforming building from a setback requirement. And we've also added the additional twelve-hundred square feet to the lot that gets us much closer to that ten thousand square foot.
Do you have an updated, um, site plan? Uh, stamped?
Um.
By a professional land, oh, they don't, okay. All right, continue.
I guess that's, that's the, uh, I think that's the long and short of it. If I'll do the best I can to answer any questions you guys might have with regards to that special permit.
Andrew, do you have anything to add to this? Have you reviewed it?
Uh, yes.
Like, obviously other than your notes?
Uh, other than my notes, no. Uh, just that I, um, met with the DeRosas about the project. Went over their land court decision, the deed, um, the existing plan and then the architect's, uh, site plan that's up on here. And, um, I felt that as long as they got a foundation as-built to certify that the new building is within those, uh, allowed setbacks, that I felt that, that I would be okay with issuing a building permit, uh, with this current site plan.
Okay. Uh, anything from the board? Bob?
Nope.
Nope. Anything from the audience? Anything from the audience online? Seeing that there isn't, um... So I'll make a motion that we, uh, close twenty-two ninety-four. Wayne DeRosa, sixty West Street, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Steve Feeney, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Corvance, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Um, so. I would, uh, move that the board vote to grant the petitioner's request for a special permit subject to the conditions to alter and extend non-conforming residential structure based on a finding the applicant has demonstrated that he or she meets all requirements in section ten twelve of the bylaw. And, um, are they up there, Andrew? Does everyone agree with special permit conditions? Everyone feel that we've met the special permit conditions? I do. I'm good with them?
I'm good.
Is everyone good?
Got that.
And so, Andrew, did you want any conditions in here? A, a new site plan or you're good with that?
Uh, they may require to submit a foundation as-built, um, after they backfill.
So that will cover it. All right, so, um, those, and that's the other condition, uh...
I'd, I'd say like a foundation as-built prior any vertical, further vertical construction. And that's to protect them to, you know?
Right.
Any financial, you know, into something that might need more relief.
Yes, okay, so a prepared site plan from a professional land surveyor prior to any vertical construction. An as-built when the job's complete and a certificate of occupancy. So do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
Can I just ask a question? Is it a site plan and an as-built or just the as-built?
So they, just, Andrew wants the site plan with showing the, uh, um...
But the whole vertical instruction. So that's on the site plan, not the as-built?
That'll be the site plan and then the as-built will be after.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be two as-bills required. What is a foundation as-built that they submit after the foundation is installed of, of before any further vertical construction? And then there'll be a final as-built that they'll submit for the certificate of occupancy that'll show everything that happened on the lot, you know, egress, uh, porches, uh, decks, driveway, all that stuff.
Two as-bills and a site plan?
No, just two.
Okay, that's what I...
Two as-bills.
Bless you.
One for the foundation, one for the, I was referring to it as a site plan.
No, I know. I just wanted to make sure that I can be clear.
Okay, so again, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Corvance, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have the continued cases, uh, twenty-two eighty-two. Richard Clements, in accordance with three oh five dash eleven, I mean, ten point zero nine of the Marshfield Municipal Code. The petitioner is seeking an appeal of the building commissioner's opinion dated July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two that pre-existing non-conforming use was abandoned on the property located sixteen Old Summer Street, which is further identified on the assessor's maps as being on parcel F seventeen zero three zero seven C and is located in the R one zoning district.
Excuse me, Jeff Delisi, I'm with Hornberger, Delisi and Harris. I'm here with my client, Rick Clements, who's sitting behind me. Uh, Rick is the owner of sixteen Old Summer Street, which is the subject property. As, as you indicated, it's located in the R one zone. Just to give a, a brief, um, background here before I get into the merits of the appeal. Uh, the lot exceeds dimensional requirements. It's a fully conforming lot. It has sixty feet of frontage in a forty-foot zone. Uh, and it also has, uh, over four acres in a one-acre zone. So the lot is improved with a single-family dwelling. It's depicted as house on, on the, uh, on the plan on the screen. And it also has a, uh, small cottage, which is kind of tucked away in the bottom of the lot there. Uh, that cottage is, uh, pre-existing non-conforming as to side yard setback. It's probably setback about ten feet in a twenty-foot zone. The cottage has been used as a dwelling over many years and it, even at one point, it was, it was rented, um, to tenants. So the use of the property has been determined, um, as pre-existing non-conforming because there is more than one dwelling on the property and under your use, uh, table of uses, uh, only one single-family dwelling is allowed on the property as of right. And so therefore, it's pre-existing non-conforming structure as to the cottage and it's also pre-existing non-conforming use as to the use of the property. Fast forward to two thousand seventeen. The town issued a building permit to repair the cottage. It was in, uh, pretty poor shape from the standpoint of some termite damage. And Mr. Clements applied to, uh, kind of, uh, reframe, uh, the house. Mr. Folcard went out at the property at the time, the building inspector, and, uh, um, explained that he did not feel that he, that it would pass the inspection for the foundation and that he thought that, uh, some substantial work would need to be done in order to, uh, to, to rebuild the, um, the, uh, frame of the structure. And so, based on that conversation, um, Mr. Clements went back and decided that he was gonna reassess, uh, the project and kind of stood down. Did not pursue the building permit. And then after that period of time, uh, he continued to use, uh, this, the cottage for various purposes, whether it be recreational purposes that are consistent with dwelling purposes. And I filed an affidavit which was signed by Mr. Clements. Uh, I filed that affidavit last week. And so COVID, et cetera, and there was some delay in the reassessment and eventually he got around to hiring, uh, Dick Rockwood to propose some concepts for, uh, for the property. And, uh, Dick reached out to Andrew and asked Andrew his opinion. And that's when, that's the reason why we're here today. I know Andrew's here and, uh, I don't want to speak for Andrew, but he did submit an email, which is part of the package, which explains that he believes that the, um, pre-existing non-conforming use had been abandoned as a result of the fact that the, um, permit had been abandoned. And so in the building code, there's a provision, if you don't, if you don't follow through on a building permit after a period of time, it's deemed to be abandoned under the building code. Uh, and so based upon that, uh, and based upon the language of the zoning bylaw concerning abandonment, Andrew determined that he thought that the pre-existing non-conforming use had been abandoned. Uh, I think that Andrew was also under mistaken belief that the structure had been demolished and removed from the property, but it, it was not. One of the factors that is prevalent here is that after the two thousand seventeen building permit issued and Mr. Clements went back to reassess and as he was using the property, last year there was a storm, you all remember it, in October, a tree fell on the cottage and severely damaged the cottage. And so, uh, a, a, a claim with the insurance company was made. The tree was removed, but the structure, uh, is still there in its damaged state. And so, uh, the bottom line is that we think that, uh, uh, that the determination that it had been abandoned is flawed. We think that there's a distinction between an abandonment of a building permit on the one hand and an abandonment of a pre-existing non-conforming use on another hand. The zoning bylaw contains, uh, the definition of abandonment or it has a provision concerning abandonment, which states that "Any non-conforming use of a structure or a lot which has been abandoned for a continuous period of two years or more shall not be used again except for a conforming use." And then separately in your zoning bylaw, in addition to the provision concerning abandonment in section nine oh seven, uh, there is a definition of abandonment, which is defined as "The discontinuance or non-use by an owner of a non-conforming use of a building or a premises." There's a, a lot of case law, uh, that, uh, indicates that abandonment requires an intention to, to abandon. And, uh, here, I, I don't think that, uh, there's been anything pointed to in the determination as to an intention to abandon except for maybe the fact that Mr. Clements did not pursue the building permit in two thousand seventeen. But as we know, he continued to use the, the property in, in the same fashion after two thousand seventeen. So, uh, I think that there never was a, a continuous period of two years of non-use and, um, there never was an enforcement request. There never was a notice of condemnation. There never was a letter notifying the property owner that he would lose his non-conforming status if he did not commence the work on the framing in two thousand seventeen. So there's really an absence of any information in the file as to an intention to abandon and, uh, it's the contrary. So I think it would be fairly dangerous precedent to set to, uh, to determine that somebody has abandoned a pre-existing non-conforming use, which is a very valuable feature for any property owner, simply by not, uh, performing a, uh, or, or not deciding to, uh, go forward with a, with a building permit. And so, based on all of that, um, we're filing this appeal. We're asking the ZBA to, uh, consider these property rights and to, um, respectfully, overturn Andrew's determination.
Thank you. Yep. Andrew, do you have anything to add or?
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to Jim Folcard about this. He was a former building commissioner who performed the inspection. Uh, he actually performed a frame inspection, a foundation inspection. Um, he told me when he went to inspect it, it was a, they were inspecting the floor framing and that the, uh, that there was no flooring. It was open for the joists and, uh, he said that the house was in severe disrepair. It was not, it either needed to be demolished or needed serious structural work. So it was not in a habitable condition. It was not being used as a residential dwelling unit at the time in the, in two thousand seventeen and hasn't since then.
Okay. Anyone on the board of anything?
Andrew, did he issue an order of condemnation when he made those findings?
Pardon me?
Did he issue an order of condemnation when he found the dwelling in that shape?
I don't know of any order of condemnation, uh, but he did fail the building permit inspection. And I don't think he was the building commissioner at the time. I'm not sure that, I'm not who, sure who was the building commissioner at that time.
So Andrew, if I understand, according to the record, there's no order of condemnation of this second home?
Can you explain to me what an order of condemnation is? Because I'm not sure.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the structure needs to be torn down.
Buildings condemned?
No, there was no order to, to tear down the structure.
And the assessors have recognized there are two dwellings on the property from, uh, two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty-two?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, it's, it's just, I'm looking at the record. That's what it seems to reflect.
I, I don't know what the assessors, uh, assess it as or what they have assessed it as.
I know that I visited the site and I don't know if I'm wrong, but the building that I saw had a, had a floor, so. I don't know what section I was looking at or maybe I was looking at the wrong section.
If that's what you were looking at, that's the wrong part.
Yeah, on page two of the assessors' report, it does list the accessory building.
It's assessed, it's assessed for forty-four thousand dollars.
To simplify this...
Forty-four thousand one hundred.
I think what's going on is they clearly had a building permit. They started that process and at that time, when Mr. Folcard went out, they reassessed what they wanted to do. So that took a timeframe and they pretty much abandoned the reconstruction of it and they were gonna rebuild it, tear it down and rebuild it. And at that point, a tree falls on it. Takes time to replan, redesign. A tree falls on it. We have COVID to deal with. A tree falls on it. We have COVID to deal with. All of this is taking up time, money. Demolishing a structure with a tree wasn't completed in 30 days with the insurance company, clearly. That took a timeframe. So, I mean, all these are delays and, you know, him not being able to utilize the residential property on his property. So, I can pretty clearly see here what's going on, the process.
Well, hold on. We've got to go from number one.
There was no... I think there was no actual abandonment. There was no intent to abandon.
Correct. Just a series of misfortunate things. Their intent originally was clearly to rebuild the structure that was there. And they started that process. Then Mr. Fulkard went to them and went through it and said, "That's probably not the avenue you want to go." So, and that's when they abandoned the permit, if you will, to go a different direction. And then, here we are.
Anything else from the board?
Do you have plans made for what the building was going to be?
I believe that Dick Rockwood had dropped off a kind of a package to Andrew this year. And then, in 2017, there was a framing plan that had been filed.
What was the intended use of it?
There actually was not. That was the issue. There was not a framing plan filed. And the plan varied from, you know, the plan of what was proposed varied so much from what was actually there when Jim got there that he said, "This is going to need a lot of work. You need structural plans because what you're proposing to do, you don't actually have building plans. You're going to be modifying this thing significantly." So, that was another part of why he said you need to do a lot of work or demolish this thing. And then, it was five years where that wasn't pursued.
But all that would go along with them abandoning the permit was stopping that reconstruction process. They got in deeper than they had realized. And Mr. Fulkard gave them that.
If you look in the zoning bylaw, you've got abandonment is non-use of a structure, a non-use of a non-conforming use of a structure. It's not the actual structure itself, you know, per se. It's the use. So, the use as a residential dwelling, you know, a single-family dwelling is a non-conforming use. That non-conforming use was not continuously used for five years, at least.
Did you not say you filed an affidavit?
Yeah, that's contrary to the facts that we filed in the affidavit.
I understand that, but they had no floor and it failed the building inspections. So, I don't know how it could be used as a single-family dwelling after that point legally.
They're saying for me, I went out there, there was a floor there. So, I'm not trying to... I don't know if we're talking about the same building.
Well, that's the thing I want to ask, Brian, because this is the building I'm talking about on this picture here.
After it was demolished by a tree.
Correct, but that was, you know, that's...
That was less than a year ago.
This was April of this year. So, if you went out and looked at it...
I looked at it last week and I went out there again today. So, I mean, I don't know if I'm seeing...
I didn't mean to intrude on your property, but I went to the site also. You know, I can see you removing the subfloor and then Mr. Fulkard going out and saying, "You got other issues here." And then, basically putting the flooring back down so he can stand inside the structure. Because when I went out there, I see someone made it safe. They removed the tree and took down the top gables or whatnot so it wouldn't fall. Yeah, it's made safe. It's down.
It's all stacked on the foundation and the floor. Well, when I think it's a floor, I don't know. But so, do we have anything else on the board?
Had 2017 not happened, had this tree not happened...
Now, the tree happened in October last year.
But if none of that had happened, we would not even...
We wouldn't even be here. Right. That's exactly the point. If he... The distinction is not following through on a building permit versus not filing a building permit at all. In either circumstance, you're left with the same structure and the same use. The only difference is obviously that a process began, which created a file, which Andrew had the benefit of consulting.
But again, you see the delays is you were going one direction as a rebuilding of a structure and then ran into the complications with...
Right.
Through the building commissioner at the time. And at that point, you decided to redirect and go a different direction.
Right.
So, that clearly is a timeframe right there. You're not abandoning your use. You're deciding how to handle the situation you have on your property.
Right.
And then, you enter into these issues.
In the future, I would advise people to stay in communication with the building department and if that's the way they want to pursue things. Go avoid this in the future.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
The other thing I just want to point out real quick on the plan that was submitted. So, this wasn't like an application or anything. This was just dropped off at the building department counter one day and I happened to look at it and then emailed Jake in response to it because I was confused because all of the prior conversations between this owner and myself and the building commissioner before were all saying that, you know, be careful because you're going to, you know, not use this thing and it's going to get abandoned. But that was, I guess, neither here nor there. But the site plan that was submitted shows... It proposes a new house on a lot that has a house and a cottage. It doesn't mention anything about removing cottage or any other, anything else. So, that was the other reason why I gave the opinion that it was not acceptable. It doesn't show that that cottage is being relocated or removed or anything else like that. So, they're just proposing... What I saw is you're proposing a new single-family to add a new single-family home to this site.
Yeah, and that would obviously not be permissible absent a change in a pre-existing non-conforming use application. So, fully understand that, Andrew.
So, what you're putting back here is on the same footprint?
We don't know. We have two years under your bylaw to pursue that. And then, we have the right to request an extension for an additional year. And we're just trying to get through the determination on this issue.
Yeah.
And then, the proposal eventually will require us to come back before the ZBA.
With an actual set of plans.
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. So, do we have anything from the audience?
Yes, I'd like to say I'm in a butter to the...
Name and address for the record.
Austin Inn, 35 Cornwallville.
Okay.
And it's a Sears cottage that's been in disrepair for a number of years. Early on, the owner ripped the kitchen off of it, making it unusable. And a lot of time has gone by and then the tree fell on it. It was already junk and not being used. It didn't have an oil tank. I check on it now and again, see what's going on with it. And it's... I want to come here and see what's going on. But it's a piece of junk and it has been abandoned. I don't see how you could put a second house, rebuild it as a house. It's not for me to say.
Well, clearly, they're acknowledging it's a piece of junk. That's why they...
Anything else from the audience? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Roberta Daniel, 18 Old Summer Street. I'm hearing you talk about more than repairing a cottage. I hear you talk about an additional house on a lot that already has a main living structure and a cottage. When Mr. Clemens bought the property, it had a house and a cottage on it. And so, I have no problems with him maintaining what he had. But I just heard mention of a third house.
There won't be a third house.
I think the third house was just misunderstanding. They're removing one. They're going to eventually put a second one there.
There was talk of a third house originally.
There can't have... What we're examining is if there's two structures there.
I also want to know about access to this cottage.
Is there access to the cottage?
I'm not sure.
Is there driveway? Is there a path?
It looks like there's something in purple.
Micro vote on...
Coming in from the street.
That driveway coming down the center of it.
Yeah, there's like a plowed area if Andrew wants to pull it up.
The access would be on land that's owned by your client, Mr. Delisi?
Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, that was my question because early on, it was proposed to go over my property.
Well, if he doesn't own your property, he can't go over your property. Do we have anything else from the audience? Anything else from the board? Andrew, do you have anything else to add?
No.
All right. Seeing as if there isn't, I'm going to make a motion that we close 2282. Richard Clemens, 16 Old Summer Street. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Rowan's aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Does anyone have any discussion on this or is everyone comfortable with what they're thinking?
Brian, is this the house that was... Was there actually two houses on the lot and a cottage and it was divided?
No, well, from what I can see, it's one house and a cottage.
Well, but I'm looking at that configuration. It looks like there's a cul-de-sac and it looks like there's a few lots, right? Off a cul-de-sac, Flower Lane, up in the left-hand corner.
What is right there is exactly what I saw. The cottage off to the side, the main house. And that slab is still there.
No, but when Andrew stated that plan up there, it looked like it was a subdivision. Looked like there was a... It looked like there was a... I can't see it now. Whatever plan it just had up had lot lines on it. Looked like there was a subdivision. See the cul-de-sac there where Andrew's standing? Then there looks like there's some lots off of this thing. I think it's Flower Lane I thought on the plan.
I don't know the answer, Bob.
Do you know whether there was a history of a subdivision there?
No, all I know is when we requested the butters list, I had extrapolated that it was Flower Lane or whatever that is. And the tax assessor basically said, "Oh, we don't... We're not using that. We're using Old Summer Street." And I didn't understand why.
It doesn't have any frontage on the Summer Street though, right?
Right. So, it clearly only has frontage on the cul-de-sac. But how that came to be, I have no idea. I didn't review title.
Well, it looks like there was a subdivision in 1986. And then, there was this 2017 subdivision plan. And there were some type of limitations. Do you know in the title if there's any limitations on the number of...
2000 subdivision. They created this lot here in 19...
And I don't know who owns the road.
I don't know if there's any private limitation on the issues here.
Excuse me.
The meeting's closed. I'm sorry.
I can answer the town attorney's question.
The board, if you want to hear it, you can ask.
Do I have to reopen it or can I just ask?
You can ask.
Just go ahead.
Go ahead.
I did the original subdivision in order to build my house running Old Summer Street and created a three-lot subdivision in that area. We all have frontage on Old Summer Street. And there is provisions that are applied to the deed that only allow one house on one lot. That does not preclude the cottage that is already there.
Right. So, it allows the cottage to be there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. All right. So, we've closed. Is everyone comfortable with what they've heard?
I am.
I am. All right. So... Now comes the... Bob, do I... So, if I put this in the overturn, is that in the positive or the negative?
You would move to grant the appeal, which would overturn the board's decision if that's the way you wish to frame it. But you want to be sure you're very careful of what you're approving. You're saying that the cottage structure is not abandoned.
Okay.
And that's all you're saying.
All right. So, I'm going to make a motion that we grant the... Thinking of the word.
Grant the appeal.
Grant the appeal of the applicant to overturn the building inspector's, building commissioner's denial of or saying this is a second home and we agree that it's a cottage there. And there is a second home there?
A second dwelling on the lot.
Second dwelling on the property. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Mark Coolman, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the building inspector as well because I can understand the compelling nature of the reason why he analyzed it the way he did.
Thank you for your information and everything you clarified tonight. So, Nancy, we have Bethanis and Rick Orelli are continued again, right?
It's October 25th.
Okay. And this Yancy, the Dish Wireless people, are they...
I think they should be on Zoom.
They aren't here?
They were on.
I saw it earlier.
Is the Dish Wireless people out there?
Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Good afternoon.
Right. I know, but I just want to... I want to hear because we have to switch Andrew and Nancy in order to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so 2274...
They've already been read in.
All right, read in. So, go ahead. Yaseen Nuri, is that her first name? Go ahead with your presentation.
For the record, my name is Mr. Murray with Murray Communications on behalf of Dish Wireless. Dish Wireless is expanding their footprint nationwide to provide customers with a full national option for wireless services. As such, we're in Marshfield, one of our locations in Marshfield. There's an existing structure located on Old Yo pad across 3C and 02. We plan to utilize the 135-foot ladder panel or 135-foot section of the existing 150-foot structure. Our install, we look to add three six-foot antennas. Again, that's 150-foot height along with a small field platform to add a 5x7 at the ground level by a foot and a half high of a foot and a half off segment. In a nutshell, that's the sort of proposal for this location. Again, thirty antennas at six feet at 135 level of the existing structure. And as such, we are seeking a time to record this at 305 12,002 of the Marshfield commercial.
Andrew, do you have any problem with what he's doing?
We just need ZBA approval.
Right. Site plan approval.
I do have a question. Is this a new antenna?
No, it's made out of early permit. That's all.
Is this a...
I'm pretty sure they already filed approval.
Yeah. So, Yaseen, is this... This is a... I'm confused because I know we have some that are adding.
Is this tower existing?
They're adding an equipment platform in this bridge. And they are adding, like I think, three antennas to it as well.
Yeah, it says there's three six-foot antennas on top of the existing antenna.
Yes.
That's what their application says. So, it's going higher.
We're mentioning...
The structure's already there. They're adding antennas.
Yeah, you're just... Yeah, you're just adding antennas to the existing structure.
Right.
Yeah.
This location, it's not going above what has already been approved.
Right.
Even better.
Okay. And what are we looking at now? The one on, uh? Holyoke, and then we're gonna, that one's actually not bad. Like, it's not really visible from anywhere.
This one's fairly simple. It's a modification of the fence for the actual site. It's all within the already the approved site. It's just adding this, this structure.
That piece in the back. It actually is, that's not a bad one. It's not really that visible. All right. Any questions from the audience, or the audience online? Nope. Seeing as that there's none. I'll make a motion that we close 2274, Yaseen Nuri, Dish Wireless. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Robensia, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for 2274, Yaseen Nuri, Dish Wireless on Holyoke Avenue. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
Oh, you know what? Can you throw up the site plan thing so we can agree with that?
Dated June 17th, 2022.
Yeah, the plan dated June 17th, 2022.
Oh, yeah.
Just so we agree with the site plan approval. I think there's 10 of them. I mask confusion in here tonight. So does everyone agree with the site plan conditions that they meet them?
I do.
I do?
I do.
All right. And do we need any other conditions in there, Nancy? I can't think of any. I don't think we normally do. All right, so I have a second on the approval.
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Robensia, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Okay, Yaseen, so you have another one on 969 Ocean Street?
Yes, sir.
Can you roll that up?
Absolutely. Would you read it into the microphone?
Yes. Oh, I already read it in. I read it in.
And again, for the record, my name is Mr. Norrie with online communications on behalf of Dish Wireless. Our second location in Marshfield is the existing structure located on 969 Ocean Street. We plan to utilize the thirty-foot, thirty-three-foot grad center of this sixty-six-foot existing structure. Similar install, we look to add three six-foot antennas at that thirty-three-foot height. Along with, again, another five by seven field platform on the ground, rating about a foot and a half. Similar condition or similar approval, we're sticking here in accordance with three oh five, actually three oh five, at twelve dot O two, the Marshfield Municipal Road.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Actually, this one appears to be getting kinda crowded.
It is crowded.
Does it get to the point where there are limitations to these?
We don't have.
Absolutely. I, we, I, we are at the lowest that can be for any kind of hooker, any carrier looking for. So that thirty-three-foot range, that does work for Dish, but anything below that kind of, it really would be moot, wouldn't get the coverage it needs.
So what you're saying, these are smaller antennas that are able to go onto this, but anything large, you wouldn't be able to go onto this at this point?
Correct.
Andrew, do you have any input on that?
Any input on the, the size of it or?
Just the limitation of the amount of, the density of antennas that go on these structures. Cause.
No, I mean, this is, look, they go through a lot of engineering, a lot of, you know, figure it all out. They get the, there's a lot of federal law involved in this. So as far as like density and all of that stuff, I don't think there's any safety concerns. They, they, you know, generally figured all that stuff out. You know, as far as setback, remove equipment concerns, that's all kind of figured out. So I, I don't think there's really any concerns there. My only concern was what he just mentioned where he said it would be like a foot and a half off the ground. This is in a flood zone. It's in an eighty-nine. And so where that's located, I believe it's elevation five. So the, any mechanical equipment would have to be five feet off the ground.
All right. And let me make sure that that wasn't just a group voice, we're playing with it. I know all the platforms we have to utilize in this market have been, have been a foot and a half. But let me just pull this up to make sure that that's.
That thing's way off the ground.
Oh, yeah, I understand. It was my apology. I, I was getting the two by time.
I was gonna say, that thing's pretty high off the ground.
Yeah, that, that certainly take, much of that study has been taken into consideration because that level of care will look like it is a three-five feet off the ground.
Okay.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yep, that's it.
All right, so. All right, so I'll make a motion, no one from the audience wanted to speak on this, right? The board. Make a motion that we close 2275, Yaseen Nuri, Dish Wireless, 969 Ocean Street. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
And all in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Robensia, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the conditions that we have up there, one to 10 prior also for this decision. And the site plan dated 6/6/2022. Really no other conditions. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
All right, we'll take a, let's take a five-minute recess.
Brian, before you take a recess, and I hate to do this to Mr. Marathus, but there are two other things on the other business.
Oh, no, we're gonna get to them after.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah.
I just didn't know if I was going downstairs.
You are going down. Oh, right, so then you're going.
There's two other things that I need to be downstairs for.
Oh, okay. So you're gonna just go downstairs and then leave or?
No, I'll be back, go.
Oh, all right. Yeah, we have Casal and one other, right?
Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, just so we can get this switch done. So five-minute recess, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you. Oh, you there, Nancy?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, so let's reopen the meeting. I'm gonna reopen the meeting. Do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All those in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Stefeni, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Robensia, aye.
Mark Corwin, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
All right, we have 50 Ocean Street. Mr. Marathus, go ahead.
Good evening.
It's already been read into the record.
Okay. So if you remember, the purpose of the change was to modify the roof lines of the garage. The garage has a very strange roof line. Kinda looks like a salt box right now. And the idea was to match the roof structure to the existing house and connect it to the house. After our meeting, I went back and forth with the DEP and back and forth with FEMA and back and forth with the building commissioner, Robert Vogel. And at the end of the day, we came to learn that by attaching the structure to the house would create the problems with FEMA. So that then the entire structure would be non-compliant because the garage is on grade level and the house is elevated. So the suggestion from the building inspector was to do the addition but not connect it to the house. So the garage and the catwalk, as I call it, would be separate from the house. So there'll actually be a one-inch separation between the catwalk and the garage and the house. At no time will the two structures touch. So there'll be a door leaving from the house and then a door going into the catwalk that leads to over the garage. The other issue is in order to make the garage compliant, we would have to add flood vents and bring the garage into compliant, compliance with the DEP regulations. So the architect today received all those notes from the building inspector and from DEP and made the modifications to the plan showing a one-inch gap between the catwalk and the house. And then added the flood vents that are required by DEP to make the existing garage conforming.
So Bob, did you understand that as this would work as long as the space is there?
I think that's the board's decision to make. A one-inch gap between a connection?
Oh, no, I'm just saying so.
It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
What we got from FEMA?
It makes absolutely no sense. There's a door on one side and there's this breezeway on the other side. Breezeway to what? It, it makes absolutely no sense. The whole purpose is to connect the dwelling to the garage with living space over the garage. And to say that that's not what's gonna happen is, is absurd. If it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, chances are it's a duck. And he's trying to, Mr. Marathus is trying to be cute with the law. He knows he can't do legally what he wants to do. So he thinks, he thinks by creating a one-inch gap that he's fooled everyone. But he doesn't fool me and I'm sure he's not gonna fool FEMA because they're a lot smarter than I am.
So if I can just respond to that, it's the actual building inspector who suggested this.
The building inspector isn't gonna be in front of FEMA. It's gonna be you and it's gonna be this board that permitted this absurd project.
The DEP actually went along with it and said as long as the garage is freestanding with the connection.
It's not freestanding. I mean, don't, don't kid a kider.
Well, it actually is. It's gonna be.
Why is there a door?
It's gonna be down to footings. No, obviously the purpose is to create the space over the garage. But in order to stay compliant in the flood zone that it's in, it can't touch the existing house because then it makes the house non-compliant.
And you're saying that it's never gonna be connected?
Correct.
It's a door to nowhere.
No, it's a door to the next door that leads into the room over the garage. But they can't physically touch. They can't be supported on each other.
It's a no, it's, it's an absolute no for me.
I thought at one point in the last meeting, didn't, didn't you remove this area, the enclosed porch? Didn't you remove that during the construction?
It used to exist, correct.
So it was existing and it was removed?
The garage used to be connected to the house. When we lifted the house, FEMA wanted us to tear down the connector. And the idea was that we were gonna add it back later.
But because now the town is complying with all the FEMA regulations and, and there's a rating for the town
and in order to preserve that rating and to make the garage not interfere with the rating of the house, we can't connect it to, so it has to be a, a non-connected garage with a room over it. It can't actually can.
In the emails that I saw, I didn't see anything that said you could do this one inch. I mean, I know in our bylaw.
Yep.
There's a one inch that separates the two.
Yep.
I mean, I just, for me personally, I would have to see this on a plan.
I have the email.
Do you have a plan stamped by a, a surveyor or an engineer that shows the existing and the proposed setbacks?
Yes.
Where is that plan? Has it been submitted?
Yes. And I also have the email from the building inspector from today.
Was that in the loop? I was in that loop.
There was two different loops that were going.
Yeah, cause I sent one out to ask him what he wanted for the.
Yep. I kept asking him to combine the loops so that everybody.
Isn't in the bylaw that, that minimal separation is acceptable to make it?
It is.
Mr. Marathus, is your stamped plan, the plan from?
Steinbeck and Taylor.
I don't see that.
There's a site plan from Steinbeck and Taylor.
Is it updated showing the gangway or whatever we're calling this, the humpway?
No, because it wouldn't be on the ground, elevated in the air.
I've got a plan from Structures Engineering?
Right, but you'd have to show it on the plan. We have to see what we're looking at on the, on the engineer, you know, the.
Well, he has this plan. He just doesn't have the whole surveying. He's got this is what he's proposing tonight with the gap. It's ready, one, one-inch space separation, but it's.
Do any of you have the plan from Steinbeck and Taylor?
That's the plan right there.
You guys?
Right there.
That's the old plan when you were gonna put the lift, did you put the lift in or no?
No.
Remember the lift.
That's dated 3/12/2020?
Yes.
And where, was that plan submitted to us?
Yes, on a, on a separate.
A separate.
Issue. I didn't see that from that lady from DEP.
I have it right here.
Can you send it, you'd have to send it to Nancy or?
Yeah, I can send it to Nancy.
Now what does that say?
It says, so if the proposal does not include attaching the garage to the dwelling and it is determined to be a substantial improvement, then the garage must come into compliance with the standards of structures in an AO zone. The design flood elevation is the highest adjacent grade plus four feet, R322-1-4. Stamped plans are required, R322-1-1. As you note, openings are required. Machinery, equipment, electric must meet R322-1-6. And flood resistant materials must be used below the design floor elevation, R322-1-8. And that's from Eric Carlson.
So that's pretty much speaking to the garage itself.
Correct.
Correct. And now this, this covered bridge, as you're describing here. It's not described in that. It's just saying, basically it can't be attached to the house.
Right. Well, the building inspector outlined the whole plan of what we're proposing to do.
Yeah, that's why I get clarification from Brian that.
Yep.
That's the gap they was.
It's the one-inch space. I mean, I know that in our zoning by law.
It's really the FEMA regulations that trigger not connecting it to the house. Because once you connect it to the house.
Well, you could have connected it, but you would have had to elevate your garage.
Exactly.
Take an elevator to begin.
Right. In order to connect it to the house, I would have to make the garage comply with FEMA regulations. And I would have to elevate the garage to the elevation of the house.
To the house. I don't know how you'd get it.
Which I can't do because you wouldn't be able to pull a car in the garage. So it would be totally unusable space at that point.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I understand that.
So once the connection is made, it becomes part of the house.
And this covered bridge is giving you access into your garage from your home?
Correct. Yep. There already is stairs in the garage and there already is a second floor on the garage. So by changing the roof, we'd be able to pull in the garage, be able to go up the stairs and walk into the house. We would have to go through the connector, which would not be attached to the house, but it can't be according to FEMA. Or I wouldn't be able to have a garage anymore. I would have to make it all house and no garage.
Yep. I, I see what you mean. It just seems crazy having, having an inch gap there. But if that's what the bylaw is stating, that's what it is. To me, it's crazy.
How would we get confirmation from FEMA that this is acceptable?
You'd have to show it to them on a plan and ask them if they think that this is a detached garage or not.
Okay. Would you wanna go? Could you do that, get us the plan?
Yeah, I can, I can give you the, the thread of the emails between them and the building inspector.
Like, it does.
I, I understand that.
We can't put it, there's no way to put it right now.
But I think what, what Mr. Galvin was saying, that you submitted that to FEMA with all this connecting and everything and, and they considered it to be an issue. If, if that one-inch gap was closed, it would be an issue with FEMA?
This is what the building inspector wrote to FEMA. Hi Eric, hopefully I have this right. The garage is in the AE zone, the house is in the V zone. With the intent, designed bridge attached to the garage only, structurally independent of and not touching the house. Bob, Robert Vogel, building commissioner, zoning enforcement. And then they wrote back what I read previously, which is about not attaching the garage. That the garage would have to comply with the flood elevation, with the, the flood vents. And it would have to have no equipment down on the first floor. And everything for machinery, equipment, electric, all must be on the second floor and can be not on the first floor. And the way it was explained to me is if there was a really, really bad storm and it came through there and it wiped out the garage, if it was attached to the house, it would damage the whole structure and the, and the structure was raised out of the flood zone through a FEMA project.
So it would just pull the garage.
It would make the whole project non-compliant. Because by attaching it, it would, it would all get ruined. So the idea is that the garage could get ruined on its own without destroying the rest of the house. So there would be no fasteners whatsoever. So there would be no fasteners whatsoever to the structure. It would be completely independent.
So it wouldn't be attached to either the house or the garage?
It would be attached to the garage.
It would be part of the garage.
Oh, and just the one-inch space from the house?
Correct.
Was the existing gangway before you took it down, was that enclosed?
It was.
Yeah, the only reason he had to do it is because it, it makes it, if he reattached it now, it'd need a variance.
Yeah, you used to be able to walk from the garage into the house.
Into the house. It wasn't until you elevated.
Correct.
They made you take it down because you would have had to put the garage, and you wouldn't have been able to get in it.
If you came out there on a, on any given day?
I went out there, there's, if you elevated that, you could, how could you even get in it?
My house is 13 feet in the air. The wind up there, you can barely open the door to get in the house half the days. It's, it's unbelievable the wind.
Oh, I saw that, I saw everything out there.
It's, it's very, very difficult to get into the house. And my wife just had a baby, the baby's eight months old, and she tries to carry the car seat up the stairs and tries to go into the house, and it's virtually impossible to get in the house.
I just wish that Bob had sent something to us.
I asked him to several times, if you see on the email thread, and he's like, everyone has the thread, and there was two different threads, there was one thread.
I don't have that one.
DEP and one thread from him to us.
We were all on, Greg was on, because actually Greg said you're in the A-O-3, not the A-O. It's just a difference of feet.
To me, the one-inch gap seems kinda crazy, it's, it's, I, I didn't understand it, but now with the clarification of it actually not being attached to the structure and not having any fasteners or anything along those lines. You know, the, the theory behind it, I guess, I can understand now if it gets washed down.
Yeah.
Ocean Street.
From what Bob told me, they have several houses in Situate that have the exact same design, with the same one foot.
Well, I know we have that one-inch space here in Marsh, I know it's in the zoning bylaw. It's how you can differentiate having that problem, which leads to a variance with the detached.
Brian, this is in the R District?
Yes, R3.
So it says, uh, 305, 6.07 accessory buildings?
Yes.
In the R District, "A detached accessory building shall conform to the following provisions: Shall occupy not more than 25% of the required rear yard, shall not be less than 20 feet from the front street line, or less than 10 feet from any other lot line, or from any other principal building." So this would be in violation of that.
You're right, so if he added that to the structure, that would then.
Cuz he's, he's extending the, the dwelling.
Right.
To within an inch, which is less than 20 feet.
Extending the garage, so.
Well, he's, no, he's, he's, he's increasing the size of the garage.
Right.
To, to include this second story.
But he's also attaching the gangway to the garage.
He's, no, 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 he can't, he can't do that.
No, he's, he's attaching it to the garage, you're leaving the gap at the house, I thought.
Yes.
Yeah. So I see what you're saying, so it's not within the distance from the house.
Yeah, it's gotta be 20 feet.
10 feet. 10 feet, can't be less than 10 feet. So you'd need a variance to do this.
Less than 10 feet from any lot line or any principal building.
I know, yeah.
Yep.
Also, I think we need to consider too that it was, was there.
Yes, it was.
Then you removed it for this project.
Do you have any, like, uh, emails, paperwork, anything like that, of them saying, saying that?
I know, but that doesn't. Yeah. I, I think for me, comfortably, I'm okay with moving this to the 11th and getting all Vogel, Bob Vogel's information. Not, we don't believe you, but, I mean.
Okay.
I just.
That's fine.
I'm not comfortable with this at all because of FEMA.
Sure.
And, I'm, I'm, you know, glad you did this, you went, rushed this out to us, and I appreciate it, but without a site plan and some, and Vogel telling us specifically. Showing us from FEMA, like, he's the guy that has to respond to us on this. Without his help.
Sure.
I'm not comfortable, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board, I'm personally just uncomfortable with it.
I would, I would agree with Brian with that, I'd like to get clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I asked, I asked, I asked him several times to send you, you know, to clarify, just write it simple, that.
I just would like to see it, cuz it would have went to Bob, and then we could have talked about it.
Are you retaining all your other means of egress from the building?
Yes.
Are you maintaining those?
Yes.
Okay, cuz that, that would not be a viable means of egress.
No.
Because of the way your doors fly.
Right, correct, yeah, no, I still have, I, I have four doors out of the house. Unfortunately, they're all 30 feet in the air, but it's still four doors.
No, I know, I, I know you came to what she had the lift, the dormer, you've done a lot of work there. I understand, I totally get it. And I know you've been trying to figure this out, you had the little, uh, that, like, portable house, you were thinking if you could stack two of those together, yeah. I, I know what you're trying to get at.
Improve the property and.
I, me personally, I know.
Make it livable.
I know that one-inch gap thing, it's just that now I wonder, do we trigger, you know, obviously, we trigger the variance, I, I thought, I wasn't thinking, you know, to that point.
Yep.
But I mean, for me, if we can get that information from Vogel, and maybe you can update, um, the engineer plan, just so we have something to.
Sure.
Look at, to know what we're agreeing to, I would just be more comfortable just because of the complications of FEMA.
Sure.
So do you guys in agreement, we continue to the 11th?
Yes.
Nancy, the 11th, we're okay to go to, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the 11th give you time to put this together?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask, I'm just gonna ask Steinbeck to update the plan, just to show the, the little connector.
And we'll get Vogel to send everything to us and Nancy, so we can print it and each have it. So we can verify it. All right.
Sounds good.
On the motion that we, uh, continue 50 Ocean Street to the 11th?
Larry Keane, second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Steffi, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
We'll put you on first, you know, I know you've been patient.
Can I just grab the copies of the plan, I'll leave one, you guys.
Yeah, if you.
And then I'll scan one and send it to Nancy.
Whoever drew it, they could probably just send, I know, I appreciate what you went through. Yeah, we just have to keep one.
Brian will bump you up to second to last next.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
And maybe if somebody can ask him to weigh in and.
I will, if he doesn't, make sure I'm, I'm on all those change, I just didn't see any of that stuff.
Okay.
Um, so, all right.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Nancy, we just got the last two to do.
I'm right there.
We have to reopen Cassell.
Where we at, Brian?
Nancy said we had one more. I missed place.
Which one was it?
I know we have to reopen Cassell, cuz he, they put in to, um, withdraw without prejudice. Yeah, we have, um, Cassell and Pelagi.
Pelagi? Under the business, Ellen?
Yeah. So Nancy, we just have LaSalle and, is it Pelagi?
Pelagi, yeah.
Yeah, Pelagi, sorry. So did they already figure in their tolling period and all that? On Pelagi?
Um, I didn't, she just really wants to do it because she's just nervous.
Okay.
And I don't know.
Right, it was, if a permit was granted during the pandemic, I don't think they're afforded the tolling period. It, it only applies to permits that were before the pandemic, but Bob can clarify that one.
He's correct.
Okay.
It only applies to permits that were issued before.
Oh, all right. Sense, but, all right, so, um, we'll start with, uh, 2083 Jamie and Jashan Pelagi. Petitioner has a request on the extension for the special permit that was granted on December 8th, 2020, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The petitioner is also asking if a change from their approval to construct a 32 by 36 single-story addition to a two-car garage with storage above on the same approval footprint would be a minor modification. Are they here?
No. She didn't submit any plans, she just, they just wanna know if they'd, um.
So they're just asking us the question, Andrew? So we're gonna ex.
I, I don't know, I haven't spoken to these people.
Oh.
Yeah, if they want to change the project, I, I think it depends on.
This stand, well, I'd have to see.
It's gonna stand, it's gonna be the same footprint as what was previously approved.
So they're just looking to put a room above the two-car garage?
Yeah, before they would do the addition and then come back eventually for an accessory apartment. But now they don't wanna do that, they just wanna do the garage with the, um, storage space or something above.
So just storage above the garage? So they're going from a, whatever, a one-story garage to a two-story?
What's the address, Nancy?
746, uh, Forest.
That's not even.
1046 what?
746 Forest Street?
Okay.
I saved their plans and, uh, decision from the previous one to the file.
So he, they were going from an in-law to just a garage now?
Yeah, they were doing the addition, and they couldn't do the ti, the, um, accessory apartment at the time.
Yeah.
So they were gonna wait and then do it, and now they just wanted to do the garage.
This is probably during.
Brian, I'd be inclined to grant their extension, and then if they come in with plans, they go to the Building Commissioner, if the Building Commissioner thinks they need to come to us, then they would come to us, but I don't think we should approve a change of the permit without seeing what they're proposing.
Okay, I agree with that.
I think Andrew is more than capable of making the call.
So Andrew, we'll have them bring in the new plans. I mean, I don't have a problem with it being a minor modification, but I'd like to see what we're minor modifying. Minor modifying.
Minor modify.
That makes sense.
Modificating.
I'd like to see it modified, too.
I like, yeah, it's a good new word.
It's a modification situation.
Um, so are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we grant the extension for time for the special permit for 2083 Jamie and Jashan Pelagi. What's the address on this place again?
746 Forest.
746 Forest Street. How long did it get, Bob, is it six months on a special permit?
They can have an extension of up to six months.
So we'll give them six months from December 8th of 2022, cuz it's good for two years, the special permit, right?
Special permit is good for two.
Yeah, so we're gonna give them six more months past December 8th, 2022. And when is that? May 8th?
I can get it real quick.
Yeah, don't forget the days with one, the extra time. So we got 10 forward by the, uh, 40B.
June 8th, 2021.
Oh, wow, worked out. So the June 8th, 2020, um.
Three.
Three.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Steffi, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Mark Quillen, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
Thank you, and then, uh, we have Cassell. 2268 Jeffrey Cassell, 1176 Ferry Street, has asked to withdraw without prejudice, so we have to reopen that case in order to do that, right?
You could, you could vote to accept his withdrawal if you want.
Okay, we don't have to reopen.
You've closed the hearing?
Yeah, well, we didn't, no, we haven't decided it yet.
But the public hearing is closed, but you haven't decided this case.
We haven't decided.
And you've got a written request for him to withdraw with prejudice?
Yes.
The board can, the board can vote in lieu of taking final action to approve or deny to allow him to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, so 20.
Does, does this mean that he intends to comply with the notice of violation?
He would have to.
Yeah, he would have to, Andrew, cuz he's withdrawing. So 22, 2268 Jeffrey Cassell, 1176 Ferry Street is going to withdraw without prejudice, no, wait, so we have to, what did you say again?
You can allow, you can allow him to withdraw without prejudice based on his written request.
All right, we're gonna allow him to withdraw without prejudice on his, based on his written request. Did you say in lieu of something, or, no, we don't have to say that?
Well, he's asked to withdraw, so.
All right.
You haven't voted it yet, so you can allow him to do that.
All right, good, do I have a second?
Larry Keane, second.
All in favor?
Larry Keane, aye.
Steffi, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Brian Sullivan, aye.
The thing is gone, I went down there, so.
It is gone, yeah.
Yeah, um, so is that it, Nancy?
That's it, I, I didn't put this on the agenda, and I just sent an email to you guys today about the November 8th meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, does anyone wanna, can we just, how many applications do we have in already for that?
Nothing yet. It's just that I need to know so that I can, when I.
Why don't we just roll it into the next meeting?